Welcome to the Gospel According to Mark, session three. My name is Cindy Kazer, and today we're going to cover chapters four and five in the Gospel of Mark. We're going to kind of walk through some of the high points and talk some today about parables and how they reveal to us what is hidden. We'll see some parables in action when Jesus has a set of three parables about seeds that He talks about. And we'll see Jesus as a living parable in the calming of the storm. And we'll wrap up with some healing miracles showing us the spiritual, physical, and communal healing power that He has. But before I really dive into chapters four and five, I want to recap a couple of the main points from last week, just so you have those in the back of your head as we move forward into chapters four and five. So last week, we saw Jesus as a challenger of conventional wisdom. He took what was considered the societal norms of the day and said, "Let's do away with some of these ideas of who the kingdom of God belongs to and who it doesn't." He took away this in-out group and touched people who were unclean. He ate with outcasts. He healed on the Sabbath. All of these things were very counter-cultural. And the point of this for Jesus was that He wanted to tear down the cultural walls to really open up the kingdom of heaven to all people. And we'll see those themes throughout the chapters that we'll talk about today. We also saw Jesus as a restorer of human wholeness when He healed people. He would bring the outcasts back into the fold, back into fullness of life and community through His healing. And the last major theme I want to point out was that He was a teacher with an innate authority that the Pharisees did not possess. And they noticed that He had an authority that they didn't have. And so we begin to see Jesus having this authority that only can come from God. And we'll draw that through the readings today as well. So when we go here, we're going to pick back up with Jesus at the start of chapter four. And Mark, in his sense of urgency, goes from one place to another very quickly. And he says, "On another occasion, Jesus is teaching by the sea." So we know things happened in between the end of chapter three and the start of chapter four, but Mark's saying, "Let's get to the point." This is the fun stuff here. So He's by the sea, and He's teaching in parables. And here we begin to really get some good nuggets of what the kingdom of heaven is about and what it means to be a disciple and all these good teachings that Jesus has. So before we dive into the actual parables, let's talk about what is a parable? And why would Jesus talk in that way to the people? So parables themselves are metaphoric stories. They're open-ended. They often contain a dramatic or outlandish, kind of over-the-top aspect to them that would stick in people's minds well after they heard it. They also really invite a reflection because they are open-ended. And while there might be some frame of reference as to what He's talking about, for instance, it might be framed as, "The kingdom of God is like..." There's always still open to interpretation. There's the idea that you can put yourself in different places within the story, and it will speak differently to you. This would be a type of literary form that, while we're not particularly... that isn't particularly common for us, and we're not really familiar with it, would have been very familiar to the Jews of Mark's audience and the Jews that Jesus was teaching to on the side of the lake. So because the Jews would consider the Hebrew Bible as something that would be returned to, the wisdom teachings especially, and they'd return to these wisdom teachings and mull them over and see how they speak to the current situation, the same thing that we would do with parables, where they speak differently to different people at different times in their lives. And so this is something that the Jews were very comfortable in how to process this and make it something that they could take away a message from. So the question remains, if He's going to speak in these very open-ended, metaphoric tales, why would He do that? Why not say what you mean, mean what you say, and move right along with life? Why make something seemingly harder than it has to be in this indirect way of telling them something? And we see this in an aside. Once Jesus is teaching, there's this aside in the middle of the parables where it's just Jesus and His disciples, and He's explaining the parables literally, "This is what it means. This is what I'm telling you about," to His disciples. But He's not doing that to the rest of the audience. And the disciples kind of go, "Why are you speaking in parables?" And Jesus says, "So that they may look and see, but not perceive; and hear and listen, but not understand; in order that they may not be converted and be forgiven." And that kind of gives you pause and say, "So you're making this harder than it has to be so we won't understand it and we won't get it. What?" So the thing to remember here is that He's speaking to Jews who have a really solid understanding of the Hebrew Bible, our Old Testament, right? And they would have heard this language, this kind of ironic language of the opposite of what He means in terms of bringing people into conversion. And they would think Isaiah. Because when God called Isaiah to His ministry, you can find this in Isaiah, chapter six, He ironically tells Isaiah to go to the people and speak to them, "To make the heart of this people sluggish, to dull their ears and close their eyes; else their eyes will see, their ears hear, their heart understand, and they will be healed." So that language that Jesus uses and why He speaks to parables, why He makes this kind of difficult for the people, is the same language that God uses with Isaiah when He's summoning him to go and convert His people, bring them back to worshiping God. And Jesus's audience, and especially Mark's written audience, would have understood that frame of reference. The idea is that He's actually doing this so that we will be healed, so that we will be brought into the fullness of life and the faith. And the question still is, why does it have to be so hard to do this? It's still not straightforward. And in the midst of explaining this, Jesus pulls out this parable of a lamp. You don't put a lamp, you don't light a lamp and then hide it under a bushel. And He says, "For there is nothing hidden except to be made visible; nothing is secret except to come to light." And with the frame of reference in talking about why to use parables, we can understand this to mean that it really is in the making the jump from "this is a story" to "what this is telling me about my life." It's that leap, that last jump that has to be made internally when you're teaching in parables rather than straightforward. Making that jump is what brings that aha revelation moment, that moment where you go from simply regurgitating back what a teacher is telling you to having owned it and understood it and really claimed it as something in your life. And that's why a parable is necessary, because He wants the people to make that step of ownership over these ideas rather than just a "I've told it to you, and now you tell it back to me" kind of feel. So in terms of that, parables would give the pieces. But some people are going to internalize it and really draw from it and make that last step to understanding, and some people won't. And that's kind of all in God's timing. And so in framing these parables, we can see that Jesus is really not trying to make it more difficult, but He's giving us an opportunity to internalize it, think about it, and really have a conversation about it in our lives with God and see what we can draw from it. And that's that conversation and the leap that comes out of that is where our true faith is going to come from and where our faith is going to grow. So He's giving us an opportunity, not a stumbling block, is His idea behind having parables. All right, so let's take a look a bit at some parables in action. We have Jesus giving us three different seed parables. And we start off with the one of the sower going out to sow. This is a fairly familiar one. We've got, sower goes out, He throws seeds all over the place. Some fall on different kinds of soil. Some are on rocky ground. Some are eaten by birds, so on and so forth. And some produce fruit. And they produce increasingly good yields. Now, I'm not a gardener. That's not been one of my talents. But I had to do some thinking about this because when I think, "If I were to go out and sow some seeds, why don't I just sow them on good ground? Why would I sow them on ground that's rocky or ground that has thorns? Or, you know, why wouldn't I just sow in the good areas and be done?" And to think about this, let's look at how they would plant an area in those times. Okay, they would take their seed, and they would throw it over a whole area. Some of that area would already have thorns and thistles. Some of it would have rocky ground that's covered by a thin layer of good soil. But you wouldn't know that until you had thrown all your seed out and then gone to plow it all under. You wouldn't know where the thistles, once they're plowed under and broken up, are going to return. They may not return where they were initially at. You may have weeds come up in other areas that you thought were good. So the idea here, and this would be something that the people of that day would be very familiar with the process of planting, is yeah, you have to throw your seed everywhere because you don't know what kind of soil you're throwing it on. You don't know where the good soil is going to be versus the bad soil. Whereas we look at our backyard and go, "Well, that area over there, I just put some topsoil down. That's a good area. I'm going to plant there." They didn't have that luxury. So they understood that you have to just throw seed everywhere and hope that you hit enough good ground to get enough harvest for your family or to sell. Also with this, the outrageous aspect, remember I said that parables tend to have this sticking point, this outrageous thing. For them, the outrageous aspect is the point that when the good soil, when the seed falls in the good soil and it produces fruit, it produces it in thirty and sixty and a hundredfold. And even in today's standards, to get a hundred tomatoes off of your one tomato plant, that's a pretty good yield. That's kind of a crazy yield. And we even have Miracle Grow to help us out. But what Jesus is demonstrating here is that that's the outrageous aspect, that you can plant without knowing where it's going to fall. And when it hits a good soil, it's going to go crazy. It's going to give you all kinds of fruit that you can't even imagine, a mind-blowing amount of fruit. So the end, a couple of points I want to make about this. The end fate of each seed is not predetermined, right? He throws it all and hopes for the best for all the seeds. He doesn't plant seeds specifically on bad soil to say, "I'm going to plant seed on bad soil." He plants it all, hoping for the best. And the final effect of the seed is not predetermined. But every seed does produce an effect. So there is hope in the sowing, right? So there's hope that we can... that every seed that's sown is going to have a possibility of producing this fruit. And we just don't know if it's going to or not. That's not something we can say when we're throwing it. The second parable about seeds is very short, and it's probably one of the less, least well-known of these three. And basically, a farmer sits there, and he's planted his seeds. And he sits back and day and night, the seeds grow, and he doesn't know how. But when the harvest is right, then immediately he harvests. The idea here, remember, this is a middle set of three, the middle in a set of three parables, which Mark likes to put things in threes. And the middle one is always kind of the key to unlocking everything around it. And so as the middle one, even though it's short and kind of to the point, what we see here is that the kingdom of God grows in mysterious ways. The farmer doesn't know how the seeds grow. We don't know how the kingdom of God comes about, really. We know that we've done some actions. We've done what we can do to help the kingdom of God come about. But we don't know exactly how it happens. That's beyond our control. It's beyond our doing. We just only see very surface aspects of how it's coming about. And so this would challenge your perception if you let it, okay? When you perceive something as doing really well, or even if you perceive something as failing, we don't know what's going on under the surface, right? And this is kind of a call for those of us that might be in ministries, where we look at our ministry and say, "This ministry is failing." It doesn't necessarily mean the ministry is failing. It means that God is working under the surface in ways that we can't yet see. And we just have to wait for the harvest. It's also a call to surrender, that we don't have the control over the final outcome. We just trust that God is doing the work unseen. The final of these seed parables is the mustard seed. Little tiny seed grows great big plant. Again, in over-exaggeration, it's a plant that's now big enough for all the birds of the air to come and live in. And there's shade, and it brings life. Little tiny seed, great big plant. The image of having this tree or plant come up and bring life to the surrounding area is tied in a couple places to the Old Testament. There's imagery like that in Ezekiel, Daniel, and probably most familiar is the tree of life in Genesis, where we have a life-giving tree. But I don't want to get too much into that. What I'd like to do is point out some things that a non-gardener like myself wouldn't have really picked up on. A mustard is an annual. It requires annual sowing. It's not a once-and-done, "I planted it in my garden, and I'll have mustard in my garden from now till kingdom come." It requires replanting, and it requires good seed every year to have this plant grow. Now, this would be considered a mystery. And in one of the commentaries, it was written, it referred to it as, "A reality whose weakness is its power." Let's think about that for a minute. The reality is, this plant, to come back year after year, requires sowing. That is a weakness. It requires an outside force to do something. And the kingdom of God is the same way. Every generation has to pass down the seed of faith to the next generation. All it would take is a couple overlapping generations that didn't do that, and the seed of faith would die very, very quickly. So that is a weakness. It's not self-sufficient. But the power in it not being self-sufficient is it requires a relationship, right, between the sower and the seed. There's a conversation that happens when you have to plant the same plant over and over and over. There's a, in the back of your mind, you're like, "Oh, it's spring. I need to get this plant growing." And, "Oh, it's fall. I must harvest it. I must make sure I collect the seeds and know where they go so that I can do this again next year." And there's this time and attention and purposefulness and a conversation between the sower and the seed. And the same is true in our faith. There's a conversation between us, the sowers, in this case, and the kingdom of God. And it's a constant conversation that follows us throughout our lives as we try to sow the seed over and over. And in that, there is power. Because it's not, "Once and done. I did it. I put it on the shelf, and I don't have to think about it anymore." It's a constant conversation that can continually renew our lives and renew the lives of people around us as we're having this in the forefront of our minds. So what do these seed parables ultimately tell us about Jesus, right? Because we don't hear stories just to hear stories when Jesus talks. They're to reveal something to us. And what does this reveal in terms of the Christology or of the theology of Jesus? What does that tell us about Him? And the ultimate thing is that Christ's power will be made manifest, even if it's hidden, if it looks like a failure, if it doesn't look like anything's happening. You plant a seed, and you're like, "Ah, I don't see anything growing." That doesn't mean nothing is happening, right? Jesus' power is beyond what we can see, and we shouldn't be underestimating that. And so those are kind of the big points that I want to carry through to the next couple of segments here, that we shouldn't be underestimating the power of Jesus. And the last point that I want to make that's going to carry on throughout the rest of the book of Mark is this process of discipleship. And we'll see this in the walk of the disciples that walked with Jesus. And we'll also see this reflected in these parables of the seed. But there's kind of three steps in discipleship that Mark brings to light. There's the hearing of the word of God. There's the hearing of the call of Jesus, where the seed is sown, and there's a response to that. It's the initial call. There's an accepting of the call, where the seed is grown, it's cultivated. It's the disciples learning more about what this means and walking with Jesus to hear His teaching. And then there's a bearing of fruit, where this little seed becomes something that affects the world around it. It becomes a big bush that can provide shade to the birds that would otherwise not have part in it. But it's a becoming, something that's going to affect the world around it. And that's kind of the last step in discipleship. And so in terms of the disciples, we heard last week where He finished calling all of His disciples. And then now we're starting to hear them accepting it, this growing of the seed. And several chapters from now, we'll hear Him sending them out to bear fruit in the world around them. Okay, so let's move a little bit from these parables of the natural order occurrences that we don't really understand. And let's move into Jesus showing that He has control over natural occurrences that can be very scary that we know we have no control over. And in this, we're going to talk about the calming of the storm, which occurs at the very end of chapter four. Now, in this, we have, they get on the lake to cross the lake. We're going from Jewish territory to Gentile territory. And this massive storm comes out, and Jesus is asleep in the boat. And they wake Him up, and their disciples are freaking out. And Jesus calms the storm. Now, this can be considered Jesus acting as a living parable, okay? He's doing something, there's an outlandish thing that He does. He calms a storm with His words. I certainly don't think I can do that. But it's this piece of the puzzle that would be the reason to tell the story again, right? It's that outlandish piece. In this story, okay, the word used in Greek for storm, it's lai lips. It means storm or whirlwind. And it kind of goes back to Genesis, chapter one, verse two, right at the start of creation, "Where the earth was a formless wasteland, and darkness covered the abyss, while a mighty wind swept over the waters." And in creation, we have this massive chaos in the world. And God, by His words of creation, speaking order into that chaos. What we have with Jesus on the boat is this whirlwind of chaos and Jesus speaking order over that as well. So it's a demonstration of Him as the Son of God. He has the same kind of authority to create order out of chaos that God had at the beginning of creation. Also of note is that at that time, these storms that would come up very suddenly and very quickly and very violently were considered to be the act of demons at the bottom of the lake, stirring up the waters and creating these storms. And the wording that Jesus used to calm the storm, this "be silent" or rebuking are the same words that He uses in chapter one when He drives the demon out of the man possessed at the synagogue. So this ties back into, He's not only having the power and authority to bring order out of the natural chaos, but He also has authority to calm demonic forces as well, so natural and demonic. One last thing I want, well, not one last thing, but one of the last couple of things I'd like to point out about this is the unconcerned sleep of Jesus in the boat while the disciples are freaking out over the storm, and Jesus is just sleeping away on a pillow. And this is the same kind of unconcerned sleep that the farmer had in the middle parable of the seeds, where he sleeps and things happen, and he doesn't know how. But he trusts that it's all going to be okay. And Jesus is the same way. He's sleeping through this. And the disciples are very concerned, but He's not because He knows that everything's going to be okay because He trusts God's ability to care for them. And so when, at the end of the story, when Jesus asks His disciples, "Why are you terrified? Do you not yet have faith?" You know, He calls them out on this. He says, "You know, what do you think is going to happen? You don't trust that it's going to be okay?" And His disciples kind of in reply say, "Who then is this whom even the wind and sea obey him?" So there's still kind of questioning, where is this authority of Jesus coming from? The same way the Pharisees were like, "We know He's got authority, but we don't know where it's from." The disciples are kind of in the same place. And hopefully, we'll see as we walk through the next chapter where He starts healing more people and really showing His authority over the physical, spiritual, and communal norms, that we'll see them kind of grasping this idea that He really is the Son of God. Okay, so moving right along, we're now in chapter five, starting it off. He's crossed the lake, right? He's gone from Jewish territory to Gentile territory. And He gets over there, and there's this man wandering around in the tombs. And he's out of his mind. He cannot be restrained. He's violent. And Jesus comes up, and the demons inside the man, excuse me, recognize Jesus as Son of God. That's how they address Him. So even though the disciples, you know, a paragraph ago, couldn't recognize that He's the Son of God, they're like, "Who is this that the wind and seas obey Him?" The demon in a Gentile knows, "This is the Son of God. I know who you are, and I know what kind of power you have and where your authority comes from." So Jesus drives out the demon. He puts it into a bunch of pigs nearby, which are considered unclean animals. So even just being in Gentile territory and around a bunch of pig farmers and a guy that's possessed, those would have broken all kinds of societal norms that we had talked about some last week and been very counter-cultural. He wouldn't have gotten a lot of bonus points for having done this, right? In that honor-shame society. So He heals this man, someone who's considered to be unclean, someone who's a pagan. He does the basic same thing here that He did in the synagogue in chapter one, where He healed the demoniac in the synagogue. And what's interesting here is that His healing power here is just the same as it was in the synagogue. It's not tied to who the person is, whether they're Jewish or Gentile. It doesn't matter where he is, whether he's in one of the holiest places for the Jews or whether he's in Gentile territory in a graveyard. And His healing really knows no bounds then. And how beautiful is that for us who would not be allowed in synagogues either? So once healed, this man is calm, right? He's peaceful. He's in his right mind. They say he's just completely different. And we go from this beautiful imagery of a calming of a massive storm on the sea to the calming of a storm of mind and heart. Remember, these are back-to-back stories. So Mark really wants this imagery to carry over, that He has authority to heal natural storms and demonic storms. But He has also the ability to heal the demons that are inside of a person and to really calm the storms that are inside as well. So He has it on, He has healing power on both scales as well. From there, then, we go back to Jewish territory. And we have these two kind of intertwined stories here. We have a healing of an official's daughter and the healing of a woman... We have a healing of an official's daughter and the healing of a woman with a hemorrhage. This juxtaposition here, um, the, the daughter is physically dead by the time Jesus goes to heal her. The woman, on the other hand, is physically ill, but is communally and probably spiritually dead as well. So there's this, um, idea of, of healing of so many other forms. And I want to get into that for a few minutes here. Um, with the woman, yeah, we'll start with the woman. Um, the woman would, the woman's healing would be considered the middle of the three, where again, this is the one that kind of unlocks on either side what's going on. And this woman was first off bleeding, which, eh, in the Jewish culture, blood would be considered your life and spirit. And so if you were bleeding, you didn't touch that because your spirit was leaking out of you. And she's been bleeding for 12 years, and so she wouldn't have been allowed in the synagogue. None of her friends would have been around her because again, this was something you didn't mess with. You did not mess with blood in any way, shape, or form. So she spent the last 12 years trying everything she can think of. She's rather desperate. She hears about Jesus and she thinks, "He's not going to be able to touch me." A man touching a woman like, or her touching him would have been cause to stone her even. She says, "If I just touch the hem of her, of his cloak, if I just touch that little bit, then He can heal me. And I can disappear and He'll never know, and I won't be stoned, and I can have my life back, and I can be around community, and I can, my faith will be restored because I can go back to the synagogue, and, and every other area of my life can be healed because this, this physical ailment can be healed." Um, and, and when she touches him, he kind of calls her out on it. He's like, "Who touched me?" And by simply stepping forward, she could have been stoned. That was the, um, you know, the, the culture of the time was you didn't touch someone of the opposite sex unless you were married. And they were obviously not. So she was a woman that was ostracized for a physical ailment that, um, required healing of the physical, but also communal and spiritual senses as well. This is kind of placed in the middle of the healing of Jairus's daughter, where Jairus asks, "Please come heal my daughter." And Jesus goes off and along the way heals the woman, but gets there and the daughter has died. And He goes, "She's not actually dead." And they're like, "She's really dead, I don't understand." And He calls the little girl back to life. He says, "Rise up," which is obviously a, um, a link to His own resurrection from the dead, a rising of, out of death into life. And He brings this little girl back from a physical death into a physical life. And said, and it's like, "Give her something to eat just to prove she really is alive," right? Now, one of the interesting links here is, it's a 12-year-old girl, and it's a 12 years of hemorrhaging for the woman. This, this link isn't coincidental, okay? There's a number of numbers in the Bible that have deeper meanings. And there's several of them that are considered to be perfect numbers. Um, three, seven, ten, and 12 are all considered perfect numbers with varying contexts. Um, we think of seven days of creation, and it's mirrored in our own seven sacraments of the church. Um, three, a trinity, um, and then for 12, 12 is considered the perfect number in terms of power and authority of God. There were 12 tribes of Israel on which the power structure and authority structure of the Israelites, uh, was built upon. In Revelation, there's a couple references to having 12,000 people from each of the 12 tribes serving, um, the Lamb of God. And so this number 12 is not something that we should just be glossed, that should just be glossed over. It's something that really has deep meaning in terms of demonstrating His power and authority to heal physical, spiritual, communal, um, separations of people. And, and that authority, being a God-given authority as the Son of God, as the, as the demon in the first healing, um, so very generously pointed out for us. Um, the last kind of link that I want to put between these three different healings is how they were each requested. Uh, the man possessed by the demon didn't ask to be healed. There was no invitation, um, but the demons in him said, "You're the Son of God, please, don't, don't drive us out completely. Can you send us into something else?" And there was a kind of a pleading of, "Don't just, don't just leave me hanging. Don't get rid of me completely." But the person himself never asked for the healing. And if, and in that story, um, as soon as the man was healed, everyone else was like, "You need to go away, we don't really want you here." They weren't bringing him more people to heal. Um, with Jairus's daughter, with the, with the little girl that's brought back to life, eh, the, the father came and asked Jesus to heal her. He believed that His presence could heal, but he didn't seem to think that, um, He could heal her from death. He knew He could heal her from her illness, but didn't think it was particularly hopeful once the girl had died. And then we have this woman who in desperate faith thought, "If I just slightly touch him, if I just touch his cloak, that will be enough to heal me." And so there's these differing levels of trust and faith in the healing power of Jesus. And we see, He has the power to heal at, at levels above and beyond what you believe possible. Um, and, and to do it in a way that is bigger and grander than what they had imagined Him capable of. His authority stretches well beyond what we can think that it does. Um, and, and finally, remember, He, He healed them all without regard to their status. Um, He healed young, He healed old, He healed men, He healed women. Uh, He, um, healed without regard for how he would be perceived for doing it. And that's a very hopeful thing for us because He, He can heal in any situation, above and beyond what we think incapable of, and He can do it for anyone. Uh, which comes back to those, that kingdom of heaven is for everyone, which is a major message that Mark wants to share with us through these chapters, four and five. So as we end this chapter, I suppose the challenge for us is to really continue to cross that cultural, gender, preconceived notion, um, dividers that we place on ourselves and on those around us because the kingdom of God is for everyone. And Jesus is trying to demonstrate that by His teaching and invite us into deeper reflection on that through, through these chapters and through His teachings today. So with that, I'd like to thank you for watching, and I hope we'll see you again next week.